You're listening to the anointed sounds of Bobby Beautiful Music. Release your musical tracks today. You're listening to the anointed sounds of Bobby Beautiful Music. Release your musical tracks today. Welcome to the journey.
You were rehearsing. You were rehearsing. (laughing) Sounds rehearsing backstage. Okay, good evening everybody and welcome to tonight's Bible study review as well of Numbers, chapters 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29. And beloved, without further ado, Brother Linden is going to take us to the throne of mercy that we may dive in and enjoy this wonderful spiritual banquet that has been provided us by our Father who art in heaven. Brother Linden.
Okay, let us all bow our heads. Lord, we come to you because we're not righteous, but thankfully, because of your Son's work, we are clothed in his righteousness. Teach us these two fundamentals. Everybody can talk about the universe and the miraculous wonders. But the two foundations that hold up this universe together is loving you and loving others as ourselves. Teach us to love one another. Teach us to bless one another. And teach us to be our sister's keeper, our brother's keeper. We know that is what pleases you. In this journey that we're taking, help us to appreciate what your Son has done for us. And though it may be painful, as long as you reassure that you're conforming us into his image, we should be satisfied, more than satisfied. So thank you for giving us this gift. We may think that it's unpleasant, it's bitter, it's painful. But we know that all things work together for the good of those who love you and will call according to your purpose. So we honor you, we worship you, and we just want you to be attentive to us as any good father would when he looks over to see his child at night. Amen in the name of Yahshua Hamashiach, our Lord and Savior and Creator, the one and only. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, brother.
Amen.
And once again, beloved brethren, welcome to tonight's study and review of the wonderful book of Numbers. Tonight, beloved, as we are preparing to start, I would just like to share with you some opening thoughts. As we are going through these studies and going through these scriptures, and as we embark upon each book, our desired goal is to go through all 66 books. Thus far, we've covered Matthew, Mark, Luke, Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, we're presently in Numbers. By the year's beginning, we're looking forward to going to the book of John. So what we do is we go from Old Testament to New Testament, Old Testament to New Testament. And then this weaving through the scriptures, our goal is to develop a love for the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. And beloved, let me tell you, when you take your time and go through the Bible, when you take your time and go through the Bible, beloved, let me tell you, you will fall in love with the Father and Christ his Son and the Holy Spirit. I guarantee you, if you stay with us through this entire journey, before completion of this journey, I can assure you, and I'm placing my eternity on what I'm saying, I can assure you that you will love the Father, or unfortunately, you will hate the Father. Jesus Christ our Lord and Savior says, "No man can serve two masters, for either he'll love the one, or he'll despise and hate the other." Beloved, you cannot say, "I love God, but I don't want to hear about that right now, and I don't want to do the Jesus thing." That's an oxymoron of the worst kind. And my daughter was tickled when I was sharing with her some of the oxymorons, Back to the Front, Hot Ice, Pretty Smart, Pretty Ugly, A Smart Dummy. She was tickled by some of those. But for you to say that you love God, but you don't really want to be in his company or his presence as often as you can be, we just came out of the book of Leviticus, and one of the duties of the priest was, he was supposed to attend to God's things seven days a week, seven days a week. Beloved, we are supposed to be in the presence of the Father seven days a week, because seven days a week, we are in the presence of the world. We're getting the world's opinions, we're getting the world's views, we're getting the world's ideals. We have to counteract that with being in the presence of the Father, yes, seven days a week. Nah, Brother Scott, you not, mm-mm, seven days a week, I gotta be in the presence of God? Yes, yes. Because like I just aforementioned, seven days a week, we are being bombarded with the world's press, with the world's ideals. And we can't let that happen. What is that the saying go? You are what you eat. So seven days a week, we're eating the world's nonsense and foolishness. And what I mean by eating is, we're taking it into our eye gate, it's coming into our ear gate, it's just seeping into us. We gotta counteract that, and that's not the stronger word that I'm looking for. We have to destroy that by being in the presence of the Father seven days a week. Aw, man, then I won't get to be the kind of person I want to be or do the things that I want to do. Then that's time for self-evaluation. You gotta ask yourself, like Brother Linden had reminded me of what I said some weeks ago, in our prayer, our most famous prayer, what's affectionately dubbed the Lord's Prayer, part of that prayer goes, "Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven." Now listen to me, in heaven, they are in the presence of the Father, if there are days and hours and minutes up there, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and whatever minutes it takes, 60 seconds per minute, 60 minutes per hour, you could multiply that, that's when in the presence of the Lord. There's a group of angels in heaven that listen to me. All they do, all that they have been doing internally past, and all that they will do in eternity future, is bow down before God day and night. There's a set of angels that do just that. All they do is bow down before God for all of eternity. And God asks us, you and I, to take a few minutes out of our day to be in his presence. Now, if you don't want to be, then please rethink your praying that prayer, "Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven." Do you really want God's kingdom in your life? Because right now, as a Christian, you can have his kingdom in your life by the way you live, move, breathe, and think. Please understand that being a Christian is one of the most beautiful things you can ever be. Christians, we still have fun, and I just want to use Brother Linden and I just for an example. And I'll use Brother Linden. Brother Linden is a husband, he's a father of four, he works a full-time minimum 40-hour a week job, he has to travel to and from work by public transportation, and he has to be ready each Saturday with these studies. He tells me, Brother Scott, when I pick up my baby boy, I take him to the park, I prepare the meals for the family. So he has a full schedule. He was telling me the other day that he was at the movies with his daughters. So being a Christian, you still can have fun. My family and I, we go to Great Adventures, we go to the beach, we go for drives. Being a Christian is not boring and, oh, I'm a Christian, I can't laugh or have... No, I don't know what kind of person that is, but that ain't no Christian. My family and I, we enjoy laughs together, we watch movies together, action shows, comedy. My son and I were watching The Three Stooges yesterday. My son's 22 years old, and I have never seen, I have never seen my son bust out with the kind of laughter that he did yesterday from watching Shemp of The Three Stooges. My son just had a rip-roaring laugh. So beloved brethren, again, seven days a week, we're being inundated with the world's, seven days a week, let's have the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, an integral part of our lives. Or we won't have him at all. Beloved, we learned over the last couple of weeks, that when God forbid you from doing something and you refuse to obey, then he'll give you what you want, but he will not take away that which he said when he forbid you from doing what he forbid you from doing. If you're not going to agree with God and his decision, then he will agree with you in yours. Let me repeat that. If you do not agree with God when he tells you not to do something, let me illustrate, when he told Adam and Eve not to eat from the tree, if you refuse to obey, then he will agree with you in your decision. Other words, when Adam and Eve did decide to eat from the tree, God fully gave them their desire, he did not interfere with it, and he gave them their full way in the eating of the tree. But understand this, the decision that you make against God, he's going to make you stick to it to your destruction. Listen to these words that are found in First Kings, chapter 22, verses 20 through 23. First Kings, chapter 22, verses 22, 23. And beloved, like I mentioned in my earlier text, if you're able to write down the scriptures, fine, but do not shrink, because Brother Linden sends a copy of tonight's script, will send us a copy of tonight's text by scriptures, and also you can have the full unedited review of tonight's study on YouTube. So once again, First Kings, chapter 22, verses 20 through 23. "And the Lord said," this is speaking, this is God speaking of Ahab, and this is Makiah telling the story. "And the Lord said, 'Who shall persuade Ahab that he may go up and fall at Ramoth-Gilead? And one said on this manner, and another said on that manner. And there came forth a spirit, and stood before the Lord, and said, 'I'll persuade him.' And the Lord said unto him, 'Wherewith?' And the spirit said, 'I will go forth, and I will be a lying spirit in the mouth of all his prophets.' And God said, 'You shall persuade him, and prevail as well. Go forth and do so.' Now behold, the Lord hath put a lying spirit in the mouth of all of Ahab's prophets, and the Lord hath spoken evil concerning thee.'" Now beloved, earlier, God has sent a warning by Elijah to Ahab that he was going to die in Naboth's Vineyard. This is found in First Kings, chapter 21, verses 18 and 19, and First Kings, chapter 22, 30, 34, and 35. And since Ahab did not want to take God's warning and save his life, but decided to try to be slick and disguise himself and go into battle anyway, thinking that he can outsmart God's words, God made sure that Ahab would not change his mind. Therefore, God sent a lying spirit to deceive Ahab to go into battle to die. Over the last couple of weeks, we learned that God told Balam not to go with Belek to curse the children of Israel. Belek was so greedy, I'm sorry, Balam was so greedy for financial gain, that he had proposed in his heart to go anyway. God said, "Okay, you want to go? Go." Beloved, the thing about free will, because everybody talks about, "I'm my own man, and I make my own decisions, and I'm my own this, that, and the other, blah, 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 blah." God does not force anyone to do whatever they don't want to do. You want to love God? He'll welcome that. Listen to this. You want to hate God? He'll welcome that as well. Because you are free will agent. There are no buttons on us that God pushes and makes us go, "I will serve God." No. God tells you to serve him, love him, obey him. I don't want to. God has said, "Okay." So God told Balam to go. First I say, "Now wait a minute, that's a contradiction." No, it's not. Because when God told Balam not to go, God meant for Balam not to go. Because if Balam decided to go, then God's going to do to Balam exactly what he had done to Balam in Numbers, chapter 31, verse 8. Balam was killed by the swords of the Israelites. Now that was Balam's decision to disobey God. So please take that into consideration as you go about your life. If God tells you, "Don't," and you say, "I'm going to," be careful, beloved, because God will make sure that you go against him. He'll make sure that you go against him all the way to the point of your destruction. So beloved, please do not misunderstand. When God tells you to do something, do it, and when he tells you not to do something, don't do it. So since Ahab decided not to obey God's warning, Ahab went into battle, and sure enough, he was killed. Beloved brethren, listen to this, listen to this, listen to this. I found this scripture a few years ago, and it's just as fresh to me, its dynamics, as it was when I first discovered it. All who refuse to believe in the Lord Jesus Christ will perish. If you change your mind and come to God and say, "Father, I was at fault," he'll forgive you, he'll cleanse you, and he'll remove the sentence of death from you. But if you say, "I don't want to, I don't want to do what God say, I don't want to listen to Jesus, I don't want to obey, I'm going to do my own thing, and I'm going to live my own life and do my own will." Listen to 2 Thessalonians, chapter 2, verses 11 and 12. And beloved, please listen to 2 Thessalonians, chapter 2, verses 11 and 12. This is from the New Testament. "And for this cause God shall send them a strong delusion, that they should believe a lie, that they all might be damned who believe not the truth, but had pleasure in unrighteousness." Beloved, don't think you're going to mock God and be successful. God tells you to stop, I mean stopping, then God will say to you, "Go right ahead." He'll send you a delusion so that you could believe a lie, so that you can be damned because you refuse to believe the truth. Beloved, please take this serious. Please take this very serious. We're going to go briefly over the review of Numbers, starting at chapter 25, starting at verses 1 and 2. Will Smith, he had a song, and his song went like this, "Girls of the world ain't nothing but trouble. True, 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 true." The children of Israel had not heard that song, so they didn't know quite how to protect themselves against the women of the world, and unfortunately, they fell for the advances of the Midianite and the Moabites women. Beloved, listen to what Proverbs says about such women. Proverbs, chapter 5, verses 3 through 6, and verse 8. "For the lips of a strange woman drop as a honeycomb, and her mouth is smoother than oil. Her inn is bitter as wormwood, sharp as a two-edged sword. Her feet go down to death. Her steps take hold on hell. Lest you should ponder the path of life, her ways are movable, that you cannot know them. Remove your way far from her, and come not near the door of her house." Proverbs, chapter 6, verses 24 through 28. "To keep you from the evil woman, from the flattery of the tongue of a strange woman, do not lust after her beauty in your heart; do not let her take you with her eyelids; for by means of a horrid woman, a man is brought to a piece of bread. And the adulteress will hunt for the precious life. Can a man take fire in his bosom and his clothes not be burned? Can one go upon hot coals in his feet not be burned?" The answer to that is no. So then beloved, how can a Christian man be involved with the worldly girl, or in this case, that I'm about to tell you, about, that I'm about to tell you of, how can a Christian girl be involved with the worldly man? Balam had convinced Belek that the only way he can have the upper hand on the children of Israel was to let, remember, Belek was the king of Moab. So Balam suggested to King Belek that let the Moabite women, the women of his, in his authority, seduce the men of Israel, and that way you can defeat the children of Israel. Beloved, I asked a question, how can a worldly man, excuse me, how can a Christian man or Christian woman get involved with someone that's worldly? When I used to be a Sessor Ride driver, one evening, or one day, I picked up a client, a real nice Christian girl, and actually, I would pick her up frequently, so we developed a rapport. So during some of our conversations, she tells me she's getting married. I congratulated her. She tells me she's marrying a Muslim. I withdrew my congratulations. She goes, "See, that's exactly what my mother did. She's against it as well." Okay, so this is the backdrop of the story. Here, this Christian woman is going to marry a Muslim man. I asked her, "Sis, when y'all have children, how are you going to do that?" She said, "We're going to let the children decide," and well, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, beloved, I'm running ahead of myself. I said, "If y'all have children, are you going to take the children to church, or are you going to let the children go with him to the mosque?" She says she's going to let the children decide. I said, "No, no, 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 you the parents, you make the decision." You see, already, and she hadn't even gotten married yet, already, there's a dissension, there's confusion, there's, there's no harmony, there's no one accord in the house, and they haven't even got started. So like I said, I picked up frequently, and over the course of a couple of years, I hadn't been seeing her. Then I did run into her. Beloved, she got into my car, she was so dejected and looked so out of sorts, I didn't even recognize her. She goes, "Driver, you're not going to speak to me?" I said, "I'm apologizing. How you doing?" She said, "You don't, you don't remember me?" Listen to it. She said, "You don't remember me?" I said, "You must forgive me. Just, who are you exactly?" She goes, "I'm, I can't remember her name." She goes, "I'm Suzie. Remember the one else who would have married a Muslim guy?" "Oh, yeah. Wow. So did you ever marry him?" "Yeah." "How did that work out?" "Yeah," was her response, in a dejected tone. "How did it work out, exactly as God said it would work out?" It didn't work out. It wasn't working out. She was as sad as, 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 as a sack of rotten potatoes. So again, beloved, scripture says, "God has not mocked whatsoever a man's souls that man will reap." When God says, "Stay away from the world," he's not saying that to be racist or prejudiced. He's just trying to protect his own. Because as the children of Israel were involved with these foreign women, listen to what God did to them because of what they did to him. "And Israel abode in shittam," this is Numbers, chapter 25, verses 1. "And Israel abode in shittam, and the people began to commit whoredom with the daughters of Moab. And they called the people unto the sacrifices of their gods, and the people ate and bowed down to their gods. And Israel joined himself unto Baal-Piur, and the anger of the Lord was kindled against Israel. And the Lord said unto Moses, 'Take all the heads of the people and hang them up before the Lord against the sun, that the fierce anger of the Lord may be turned away from Israel.'" Verse 5, Moses said unto the judges of Israel, "Slay you everyone, his men, that will join unto Baal-Piur." Beloved, because the children of Israel got involved with these foreign women, God's wrath was activated, so to speak, these persons were slain. Beloved, this speaks personally to me. Before I met my wife, I was dating worldly women. And on one such occasion, it got me kicked out of the church. I'm just going to lay it on the line. Because of my dating a worldly woman, and you can read in between the lines, I got kicked out of the church because I was not conducting myself in a godly man. I'm talking about me, y'all's brother, Scott. The warning that God gives from Deuteronomy is for our safeguard and for his glory. Let's listen to that warning that's found in Deuteronomy, chapter 7, verses 3 and 4. "Neither shalt thou make marriages with them; your daughter ye shall not give to his son, nor his daughter shall ye take unto your son." These Moabite women got the children of Israel to turn from the true and living God to serve their false gods. When I was going to church, a hypocrite, and dating my worldly girlfriend, in all honesty, I was serving her God, because I was not living as a Christian, I was living as a diabolical hypocrite. Verse 4, Deuteronomy, chapter 7, verses 3 and 4. Verse 4, Deuteronomy, Chapter 7. But they will turn away thy son from following me, that they may serve other gods, so the anger of the Lord be kindled against you and destroy you suddenly. Again, each Sunday, getting dressed and going to church was I, but living a lie as well. Serving her God instead of getting her to serve my God. So like I said, again, I got kicked out of the church, and rightfully so. Let me just put it out there, rightfully so. I deserved to have gotten kicked out of church, because if I was living in Moses' day, this is what would've happened to me. Verse 5 of Numbers, Chapter 25. And Moses said unto the judges of Israel, slay you everyone, his men, that would join unto Baal Pior. If I was living back in Moses' economy, I would've been slain rightly and rightly so. So beloved, please don't undermine godly counsel. Any involvement, you, Christian young lady, involved with a worldly man, or you, Christian man, involved with a worldly woman, you will merit God's wrath that will put a serious wedge between you and Him. Beloved, what we're reading is a 4,000-year-old, um, text, but it has very, very modern-day reality. We must understand that as Balan suggested, that Balak used the Moabites women to sexually coerce the children of Israel to their demise. Please understand that this is satanic in nature, for that's exactly what the devil led Eve to do, to the inclusion of her husband. God told Adam and Eve not to do, Satan told Eve to do, Eve encouraged her husband to do, and this is the result of Eve influencing her husband to our demise. What happened 6,000-plus years ago in the Garden of Eden is affecting you and I here today. So much so, that when God said in the day that you eat a bit, ye shall die, and I now carry that death sentence on me as well, because 100 years from tonight, November 9th, 2024, in the year, November 29th, I'm sorry, in, in, um, November 9th, 21, 24, I will not be here because of what my father and mother, Adam and Eve done. It affects me. So beloved, again, please do not say, well, what's happening in my life doesn't affect no one else. Let me just give you a quick illustration. Let's say you live in a, an apartment building where it has 100 families. And let's just say, um, a gentleman, he lives there as well, he's a single guy, and he has, um, in his apartment, a bunch of deadly rattlesnakes and poisonous snakes. And let's just say, one day, the snakes break out of their enclosure and they're, um, uh, uh, escaped out of their, their, uh, out of their enclosure, whatever it is that they use to enclose snakes. Now tell me, will it not affect that entire building? Will it not affect that, those, those 100 families? Absolutely will. Because if word get out in time enough, they'll have to evacuate the building until they're able to safely secure or apprehend those snakes. So beloved, please understand that your one actions, it does have a great effect on first, yourself, family, relatives, and most importantly, it will break the heart of our God and Father. Verses 2 and 3, and again, I'm just gonna try to move through this rapidly. Beloved, when we serve a false God, we're actually serving something that can't give you what God has actually given you. Now that false God, Baal, B-A-A-L, that the children of Israel were duped into serving. Now I did a read-up on, I did a bio on Baal, and Baal was supposed to be responsible for giving rain, crops, strength, and fertility. A Lord, and that is a lowercase l or d, as it were. But now, beloved, let's go to Scripture to see who really gives crops, rain, strength, and fertility. Please turn with me to Job, Chapter 5, Verses 8 and 10. And there it reads, "I will seek unto God, and unto God would I commit my cause, who gives rain upon the earth and sends water upon the fields." So again, Job is letting us know who gives rain to water the fields. Deuteronomy, Chapter 8, Verses 17 and 18. And you say in your heart, my power and the might of mine hand hath gotten me this wealth. But you shall remember the Lord thy God, for it is He, listen to this, it is God that gives you power to get wealth, that He may establish His covenant, which ye swore unto thy fathers, as it is this day. So beloved, who is it that gives strength? It is God that gives the person strength. So again, beloved, these false gods that you serve outside of serving the Lord Jesus Christ, you're actually serving Satan and his demons. Please do not misunderstand that. If you're not serving the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, please let me repeat that, let me repeat that. If you're not serving the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, you are serving Satan and his demons. Nah, brother Scott, you're getting just a little too, you're getting a bit out of hand. No, I don't go to church, no, I don't read my Bible, no, I don't pray, and no, I don't do Bible studies. But I'm not serving the devil, then who are you serving? I'm doing me, as a lot of people would say. I'm doing me. Well, when you do you, outside of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, you may be at the top, but what's that lowest common denominator underneath it all? Who's energizing you? Satan and his demons. Let's just put it out there, let's just get it out in the open, and let's just be as real as possible. If you're not serving the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, please, you are serving the devil. I beg to differ. I beg, beg to differ. Please understand. Can't do, you can't do both? Well, I'm neutral. Again, let me illustrate. When I was getting married some 20-plus years ago to my wife, and the pastor, uh, said, well, I was, we actually got married at City Hall. Wendy, um, I don't even know what you call them, but the, the one who's authorized marriages. When he looked at me and said, do you take this woman to be your lawfully wedded wife? Now I was either to say yes or no, because if I was saying, maybe, your mom, potentially wife, would've made the decision for me. Oh dude, you wanna straddle the fence, or you wanna play somewhere in the middle? I'll take care of that for you, bro. The answer to that is no. So beloved, you can't middle fence, you can't sit on the fence, you can't straddle, you can't, um, be the middleman between God and the devil. Because God don't play that. Either you're all for Him, or you're all against Him. And if you're not for Him, then you're all against Him. And if you're against Him, then you're for Satan and his demons. Period, period, and please understand that. Please, please, please. So the children of Israel were duped into serving these false gods. They merited God's wrath. God instructed Moses to destroy these ones. Now beloved, please understand this. Those who are not on the side of Satan, um, excuse me, those who are not on the side of Jesus Christ, God is not sending out the decree to have these people destroyed. Not yet. If they should die in their sins, that's the first stage of their destruction, because the second stage of their destruction is that they'll be cast into hell. So no, there are those, and again, brother Lyndon and I would tell you constantly, plainly, and truthfully, so that you will not think that you're wasting this life alone. Brother Lyndon and I used to be on the side of the devil, sure we were. Because when we were out there involving sex, drugs, and rock and roll, we weren't honoring the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. No, we were not. So who was our God? Satan was our God. Let's just put it out there. Let's just keep it on the level. Let's just be as truthful as it, with it as possible. Because God, you gotta remember, you gotta look at life not through the eyes of man, who says, oh, you can take it easy and have life neutral, and you got to be so into God, into Jesus Christ, and all this stuff. No. If you're not for the Father, then you're for Satan. Period, beloved. Please get that into your thinking. Please get that into your thinking, because it serves as a safeguard. Matthew, Chapter 7, Jesus says, "To those who are quote-unquote Christians, depart from me. I never knew you." Take that as a warning. As we're doing the study, or at the end of the study, sit down and reevaluate your life and really come to see who is your master, who is your God, and who is your Father. Because again, beloved, if the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit isn't your God, then Satan is. I can't put it any other way than that. I have to be truthful with you. I have to, because God will be truthful with you. So again, beloved, please, please, make the decision to serve the Father, make the decision to worship the Son, make the decision to honor the Holy Spirit, so that you can have life and you can have it more abundantly. 2 Corinthians, Chapter 6, Verses 18, 2 Corinthians, Chapter 6, Verses 14 through 18. Do not be unequally yoked with unbelievers, for what fellowship hath righteousness with unrighteousness, and what communion hath light with darkness, what concord hath Christ with Belial, but what part hath he that believeth with an infidel, and what agreement hath the temple of God with idols? For you are the temple of the living God. Beloved, please take this very serious. You, and I'm talking about y'all, and I'm, listen. Again, for the respect of anonymity, I'm not going to mention your name. I'm just going to mention the first initial of your name, because I want y'all to know that this, this is speaking about you personally. A, L, T, M, F, these are the persons that are on tonight's study. And P, each one of y'all know who y'all's initials are, so each one of y'all know who I'm addressing. You, beloved, you are the temple. Your body is the abiding place of the living, loving God. God is not meeting with you in a, in a building. Let's say you decide to go to church tomorrow. God's not meeting you there at the church. You wanna know where God is meeting you all? God is meeting you in you. What is verse 16 of 2 Corinthians, Chapter 6 says? You are the temple of the living God. As God has said, "I will dwell in them. I will walk in them. I will be their God. They shall be my people." Therefore, come out from among them, and be you separate, saith the Lord. Touch not the unclean thing, and I will receive you. Verse 18 of 2 Corinthians, Chapter 6. "I will be a father unto you, and you shall be my sons and daughters, saith the Lord Almighty." Beloved, each and every one of us here are Christians. We belong to our Lord Jesus Christ. And as such, listen to me, as such, we ought to live different, think different, and we ought to believe different. Now, I'm not saying that we're better than others, but I am saying we are better than sin. God does not want you and I living like the world. Listen to Deuteronomy, Chapter 18, Verse 9. When you are coming to the land which the Lord your God gives you, you shall not learn to do after the abominations of these nations. And it is because of this, God is going to, beloved, God is going to destroy the world. Listen to me, He did it once. Genesis, Chapter 6 and Chapter 7, He will do it again. God is going to destroy the world, this economy, their thinking. Please do not be a part of the world. That is why you decided to come listening on study, because you are making the decision personally and before Christ, that Father, I do not wanna be a part of this world, because I believe that you're going to destroy it. And I do not want to be destroyed. I love you. And beloved, with that love that you have for the Father, please take it to your family members, relatives, concerned, friends, coworkers, even strangers. Share with them what does saith the Lord, because remember, there is 8 billion people occupying the earth as we speak right here and now. And yes, all 8 billion of us either belong to the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, or we belong to the devil. Please, 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 understand that. It can't go any other way. Beloved brethren, the picture that the children of Israel had gotten into, when they decided to join themselves to the, uh, uh, false God, Baal, uh, being seduced by these Moabites women, that is what the government is trying to get us to do, trying to compromise, coming on the side of them. They want us to join in their sinful and godless thinking and acceptance of behavior that God clearly forbids and condemns. The Christian, he then, he, he gets into this. And I hate to say it, and I don't wanna use the word the average Christian, I really don't. But there are Christians that have, uh, uh, espoused this kind of thinking, they accepted it, which God forbids. Listen to Romans, Chapter 1, Verse 32. Listen to what God says for those who do such things. Romans, Chapter 1, Verse 32, reads as follows. Who know in the judgment of God, that they which commit such things are worthy of death, not only do the same, but have pleasure in them that do them. Beloved, when you espouse these things, you say, oh, I'm not, I'm, I'm not into homosexuality, but they're all right by me. They, then, lo, as long as they don't hurt anybody, I find them actually to be some upstanding members of society. Beloved, when you talk and think like that, beware of Romans, Chapter 1, Verse 32. Listen to what God says once again in Numbers, Chapter 25, Verses 4 and 5. God told Moses, take the heads of the people, hang them up before the Lord. And Moses did as he was told, and he slayed all of those that would join unto Baal Pior. Beloved, again, may I close by saying, if Jesus isn't your God, then Satan and his demons are. You might have someone that say, well, brother Scott, what if you have two consenting adults? Well, as we get ready to move into our next few verses, if you have two consenting adults like Cosby and Zemri, remember, you have one non-consenting father. Again, you may have two consenting adults, a boyfriend and girlfriend that say, hey, let's enjoy each other sexually. But God said, don't do it. Remember, one with God is the majority. Again, beloved, please forgive me, I'm trying to move quickly, but I also'm trying to linger long enough for us to get the gist of what's, what's being displayed here. Listen to Verses 6 through 9 concerning Phineas. And behold, one of the children of Israel came and brought unto his brethren a Midianiteish woman in the sight of Moses, and in the sight of all the congregation of the children of Israel, who were weeping before the door of the tabernacle of the congregation. Verse 7, and Phineas, the son of Eliezer, the son of Aaron the priest, saw it. He got up from the congregation, he took the spear, he went after the man of Israel into the tent, and he thrust through the man and the woman, through their belly, with this spear, so that the plague was stayed from the children of Israel. Verse 9, those that died in the plague were 24,000. Beloved, we had learned earlier that those who murmured and complained- Beloved, we had learned earlier that those who murmured and complained about, against uh Moses and Aaron, which they were in reality murmuring about God. God has slew in one sitting fourteen thousand. Because of this sexual immorality. God dropped twenty-four thousand people on the spot. Let me give you a perspective of that. On September eleventh, uh, uh, two thousand and one. When the uh World Trade Center was under attack, the Pentagon and that airplane crashed in the fields of Pennsylvania. On that day, three thousand people died. God killed in one setting, Numbers chapter twenty-five. Twenty-four thousand people, eight times the amount of who died. In those attacks on September eleventh. Beloved. Please stop, 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 stop thinking, stop, stop. Thinking that God is okay with sexual sins. Please stop thinking that. Please stop thinking that God is okay with sexual sins, because we see right here, he just dropped twenty-four thousand people in one sitting. Beloved, I don't think our minds can handle seeing twenty-four thousand people die right in front of us. I don't think we can handle it. I really don't think so. So beloved, when God tells you, don't do it, he means don't do it. Beloved. Listen to Revelation chapter twenty-one, verse eight. Listen to Revelation chapter twenty-one, verse eight. But the cowardly, the unbelieving, the vile, the murderers. The sexually immoral, the sexually immoral. Those who practice magic arts, the idolaters and all liars, they will be consigned to the fiery lake of burning sulfur. This is the second death. That was taken from the NIV. Listen to the American Standard Version. But the fearful and unbelieving, abominable murderers and fornicators and sorcerers. And all idolaters and liars shall have their part in the lake that burns with fire and brimstone. This is the second death. Beloved. When I was reading and preparing for my notes. What Cosby and, and, and uh, I'm, I'm putting names out there and, and let me not be unfair to um. Not help you to understand who this is. Now, Phineas, who's the son of Aaron. Of Eliezer, he killed. Um Zemri. This was an Israelite, verse fourteen. Now the name of that Israelite that was slain. With the Midianiteish woman, his name was Zenry. The son of Salu, a prince of the chief among the Simeonites. In verse fifteen, the woman that was killed also, her name was Cosby, C O Z, C O Z B I. She was the daughter of Zur, and he was the head of the people of Midian. Beloved. The reason why these studies are so intense and so personal to me, to me. Cause I used to do that same stupid thing. I just explained that to you. I used to bring my girlfriend to church. And at the church. We didn't behave ourselves. In the proper manner. And again, instead of me weeping along with my brothers. Who were coming to church to repent of their sins and to get their lives right with God, I was bringing my girlfriend to church. Beloved, I sometimes sit and say to myself, dude, how stupid, why you? I mean, as my, as my daughter would say, for real though. All I can say is thank God for his mercy that he didn't drop me. That when he could have dropped me. Cause I wouldn't be standing here tonight having these wonderful studies with y'all. Thank God for his mercy and I bless him for his long suffering. So instead of weeping over my sinful condition. I was out there acting like a fool. So I thank God for Phineas, who had the fortitude, the courage to get up and go after them. And put Zemri and Cosby to death, bringing an end to God's wrath. Beloved. I wish that there were some Phineases in my congregation. Well, I take that back because I did tell y'all that I was kicked out of the church. So I do thank God for those Phineases in my congregation. Who had the, 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 the wisdom. To kick my stupid self out of the church and I, and I bless God for that. We need more Phineases today. Because they're letting things happen in the church that is unbelievable. Unbelievable. Love it. Just real quick. Let me share with you. Let me share with you the horrors. Of the things that are being allowed in church. And again, I just wanna go back real quick to my days of being an accessory driver. I one day picked up um, this woman. And I was playing my Christian radio, uh, um, playing, um. Um. My Christian radio. So she get in there, she goes, oh, you're a brother. I said, yeah. I said, you're a sister. She goes, absolutely. I'm a pastor. Listen. Listen to me. The things I used to tell my wife, my wife said, bro, maybe you should slow your roll because I don't think you can handle this. She tells me, yeah, I'm a sister. She goes, I'm a pastor. She goes, I got a um YouTube following of a couple of a thousand people. So I'm like, oh boy, I'm getting, I'm getting all hyped up. And I'm like, yeah, I'm, 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 I'm in the company of a sister. So as we're talking. I see she's wearing a bracelet. She's, she must have sort of looked in my eye from the rear mirror. She go, yeah, that's exactly what you think it is. I said. Sister. And she's still shaking her head, yeah. She was wearing a rainbow colored bracelet. Now, Brother Lyndon was saying, uh, 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 a few weeks ago, that's the symbol for homosexuals, the, the, the colors of the rainbow. She goes, yes, I'm a homosexual. Listen to me. She goes, yes, I'm a homosexual and my pastor says that I'm all right with him. I'm laughing, but this is not laughter, thinking it's funny. This is a laugh of unbelief. And she said, she tells me, it wasn't a third or second party. She's sitting there telling me she's a homosexual. And she's a pastor and she's got a following, YouTube following of a couple of thousand people. I said, sis. I think I called her sis. I said, are you being serious? She goes, yes, I'm as serious as a heart attack. I said, with all due respect, I would like to terminate this conversation. No, no, you wanna hear me, this is what, no, you wanna hear me out. In defense of her homosexuality. I said, ma'am. I would rather we terminate the conversation. I'm asking you, please. Cause at that point, I started getting heated up. So I said, I'm terminating the conversation. That's it. As we're driving along, I go to turn up the volume on my Christian radio. I don't wanna hear that, is what she says to me. I don't wanna hear that. I turned the radio off. Beloved. Let me share with you. The horrors. I'm gonna share with y'all something that I'm very sure none of y'all have ever read. And I'm not saying this disrespectfully, or if you did read it, you probably forgot about you, uh, uh, forgot about it. But let me share with you. The horrors of what homosexuality is all about. And I want y'all to see this with your own eyes. So y'all won't think that I'm making this up. Please open up your Bibles to Judges, chapter nineteen, verse twenty-two. Again, please open up your Bibles to Judges, chapter nineteen. Verse twenty-two. Judges, chapter nineteen, verse twenty-two reads as follows. And just to give you, just, just to give you a little uh, uh, bring you up to date um, from verses one through nineteen, uh, eighteen. These are the children of Benjamin. Now there was a um, a man of God and another man of God invited this man of God to his home. We're gonna pick it up from verse, um. Let's, let's start at verse twenty. And the old man said, this is the man of God, and the old man said, peace be with you. Howsoever, let all thy wants lie upon me, only lies not in the street. So he brought him into his house and gave preventa unto the asses, and they washed their feet and did eat and drink. Verse twenty-two. Now as they were making their hearts merry, behold, the men of the city, certain sons of Belial. Surrounded the house, and they were banging on the door. And said to the master of the house, the old man. Bring forth the man that came into your house, that we may know him. The word know is a biblical term for sex. So let me use the, the, the modern term. Bring out the man from the house that we may have sex with him. Verse twenty-three, and the man, the master of the house went unto them and said unto them, no, my brothers, I pray you, do not do so wickedly. So if you wanna get a, a, a definition of what homosexuality is, homosexuality is wicked. No, my brothers, I pray you, do not do this wickedness. Seeing that this man is coming to my house, do not do this folly. Behold, verse twenty-four, here is my daughter, a maiden, and here is this man's concubine. Them I will bring out and honor them before you, and you do to them what seems to be good in your eyes. But unto, only unto this man, do not do such a vile thing. But the man would not listen to him. So the man took his concubine and brought him, brought her forth unto them. And they knew her. Listen, and they abused her all the night until the morning, when the day began to rise and they let her go. Beloved, listen to Judges, chapter nineteen, verse twenty-five. As I bring it into modern terms. They raped this girl all night long. Now really quick, I was reading an article, there were some Indian men. Um, there was a, a, a young lady, she was traveling to school. The Indian men accursed her. They abducted her. They raped the woman. To the point of where they killed her during this act of raping. So something that happened here in the book of Judges, some three thousand, four thousand years ago, is still being practiced here today in the 21st centuries. Verse twenty-seven, the Lord rose up in the morning, opened the doors of his house and went his way. And behold, the woman, the concubine, was falling down at the door of us, of his house, and her hands were upon the threshold. And he said to her, get up, let us be going. But she didn't answer. Then the man took her upon his ass and the man rose up and got him into his place. In other words, verse twenty-eight is telling her that she was dead. Listen to verse twenty-nine. Listen to verse twenty-nine. Listen to verse twenty-nine, something that has never occurred before in the Bible. I'm talking about Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, Deuteronomy, Joshua. Nothing else, nothing ever occurred like what you're about to read with your own eyes in Judges, chapter nineteen, verse twenty-nine. And when he was coming to his house, he took a knife. And he laid hold upon his concubine. Let me read this, let me read this part from the Amplified Version. Still look at Judges, chapter nineteen, verse twenty-nine, but I'm reading it to you from the Amplified Version. And when he came into his house, he took a knife. And he took hold of his dead concubine. And divided her body limb by limb into twelve pieces. And sent her body throughout all the territory of Israel. The other evening. When I was coming home, um. From uh, uh, taking care of, of, of food shopping and what have you. Uh, I went into the service station and I was looking at this newspaper, reading the newspaper. This was the other day. This was the other day. And I read about this. I read about this stupid pimp. Please forgive me, beloved. Please, please forgive me. Okay, so if I'm gonna ask it for your forgiveness, let me, let me, let me live in that forgiveness. This pimp, I'm reading the newspaper. I'm reading in the newspaper. You can Google it and see that I'm telling y'all the truth. I'm reading the newspaper of this pimp who killed. And cut off the limbs of his uh, of, of his prostitute, uh, the, the woman that he had out there. Um, you know, taking care of business for him. He did that and threw her body in the garbage, uh, in the garbage bin. He did all that so he can collect her life insurance. As I was reading the article, it was saying that the judge who's reading him is sentenced of life without parole. He showed no remorse. No, I'm sorry. Please forgive me. None of that. So beloved, what y'all eyes is looking at in Judges, chapter nineteen, verse twenty-nine, is still going on today here. In November twenty twenty-one. Beloved. Judges, chapter nineteen moves on into twenty and it gets heavy. So let me just, 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 just sum it up for you. When the children of Israel was confronted about this action, they did not surrender the men who were guilty of this. So the children of Israel went to war with their brothers. The children of Judah went to war with the children of Benjamin. Now these are brothers. Remember Benjamin and Judah. Were uh, uh, two of the twelve sons of Israel. And as a result of this war, eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty men were killed. Beloved. We need more Phineases. In this world today. We must destroy illicit sex before illicit sex destroyed us. God has, God is, and will, and God will judge persons for homosexuality. Beloved, I wanna close my section by moving over to Numbers, chapter twenty-seven. And we're gonna briefly talk about the daughters of Zalaphad. Chapter twenty-seven of Numbers clearly shows the expression of love that God truly, truly has for his daughters. And will see to it that they get their, get their equal share of the inheritance of their fathers, Zalaphad. And let me just read to you verses five through seven. And Moses brought their cause before the Lord, and the Lord spoke unto Moses, saying, the daughters of Zalaphad speak right. You shall surely give them a possession of an inheritance among their father's brethren. And thou shall cause the inheritance of their father to be passed unto them. Beloved. I'm a man. But by the stars of Jupiter, hearing God say. That the daughters of Zalaphad should rightly get their father's inheritance. It blesses, and I mean, it truly blesses my soul. Because this shows that God is looking out for the welfare of his daughters. Of all his servant daughters. I'm talking about throughout the history of the world, Mary. Elizabeth. Ruth. Naomi. Of. Mazda, just to name a few. These women that I've just named. God is going to make sure that these beautiful sisters, now let me bring it down to the 21st century. God is going to make sure that you beautiful, beautiful sisters will get an inheritance of this earth. You see. The world that we live in, whether it's in America or in a third world country or wherever in the world, honestly, women are getting shortchanged. But God is not going to let that happen in paradise. Because as you can see, once again in Numbers, chapter twenty-seven, God said for Moses to give. His daughters. The daughters of Zalaphad. the daughters of Zalaphad, their father's inheritance. Beloved, that doesn't stop there. That moves on down to the daughters of today, that is, you Christian sisters. You Christian sisters, and our Christian sisters to come. Listen to what God has in store for y'all. I'm talking to the sisters now. You brothers, you're gonna have to take a seat. I'm talking to the sisters right now. Listen to what God has in store for you beautiful sisters. Psalms thirty-seven, verses nine, eleven, and twenty-nine. Verse nine of Psalms thirty-seven, evil doers shall be cut off, for those that wait upon the Lord, they shall inherit the earth. Verse eleven, the meek shall inherit the earth, and shall delight themselves in the abundance of peace. Verse twenty-nine, the righteous shall inherit the land and dwell therein forever. Beloved, did y'all hear what David is saying? He didn't say men. And let me be fair, he didn't say women either. He said the righteous. And you sisters, y'all are righteous, and y'all are going to inherit this earth and this universe. Because your father, just like the daughters of Zalaphad, their father, they inherited his land, y'all are going to inherit Jesus's land as well. Listen to First Corinthians, chapter three, verses twenty-one through twenty-three. For all things are yours, whether Paul, or Apollos, or Cephas, for the world, life, or death, or things present, or things to come, all are yours. And you are Christ, and Christ is God's. Beloved, knowing that my beautiful sisters are going to inherit as much of this earth and universe as I am, causes me to say, bless the Lord, oh my soul, bless Jehovah God. Brother Lyndon. Brother Lyndon, come in, please, and take your portion.
We don't hear you if you, make sure it's unmuted.
Thank you. Brother Lyndon, come on in and take your portion. Thank you, sister. He seems to be having a brother, a, a bit of difficulty. Brother Lyndon, you can come on in and take your portion. Beloved brethren, please forgive me, I'm gonna see if I can, uh, uh, reach Lyndon. Brother Lyndon, you can come on in and take your portion. Oh beloved, can y'all hear me? Maybe he can't hear me. Can, can everyone hear me?
I hear you.
Okay, thank you, sister. Brother Lyndon, the, 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 the brethren is waiting for you to come in and take your portion. Brother Lyndon. Again, you can come in and take your portion. My beloved ones, I do apologize, um, I can't seem to reach Brother Lyndon. Um. In the, in the meantime, does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns for what was covered thus far? Again, as we had mentioned, um, earlier, if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, even if it does not surround tonight's study, please bring it to the fore and let us address it. So once again, does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns?
I just would like for you to send me the scriptures that was read tonight.
Absolutely, absolutely. And once again, um, like I had mentioned, um, what Lyndon will do is he will edit tonight's study, and he'll have it posted on his YouTube channel by Monday, Tuesday, but I will definitely send you tonight's scriptures, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um. Good evening, everyone. Um. Numbers is, um, is, as Brother Scott would mention, is a phenomenal book, and it's a constant reminder of our experience here. The earth is, um, our wilderness. And I find myself learning each and every day. And I'll, I'll put it to you as this. We're being trained to be like little children. Not childish children, but childlike children. These chapters that I'm gonna go over with you, they are constant reminder to us all. In this day and age, just wipe out the technology. We had an advancement in technology, and we feel that whatever we study here has no relevance to us. As it is written, there's nothing new under the sun. And I'm pretty sure everybody is familiar, um, uh, with, um, the tra, um, we are transitioning. We have a new, um, president, and I'm gonna dig in. I'm gonna give you a preview, and I'm going to give you a preview of what we're going to, uh, study tonight. I'm gonna go over your body. Your body does not belong to you. And I think people don't understand when they hear the word redeemed. Me? I thought redeemed was guys giving you a second chance. Oh, man, I was redeemed. Redeemed means that you were bought. As, uh, discussed earlier in First Corinthians, chapter six, we see that we are bought at a high price. We're not our own. So I hear there's a movement, women's rights movement. This is my body. Nobody can tell me what to do because this is my body. But if we clearly look at the scriptures, none of us, it's either we belong to the devil, or some of us have been redeemed from the devil, and now we are the possession of God. Now here's a beautiful thing about God. He says, I'm your possession. I wanna go over this again, uh, and I, and I know Brother Scott read this earlier. But I'm gonna read, uh, First Corinthians, chapter six, verse thirteen. You say, food for the stomach. Well, um, okay. First Corinthians, chapter six, verse thirteen. You say, food for the stomach and the stomach for food, and God will destroy them both. The body, however, is not meant for sexual morality, but for the Lord, and the Lord for the body. By this power, God raised the Lord from the dead, and he will raise us also. Do you not know that your bodies are members of Christ himself? So I then take the members of Christ and unite them with a prostitute? Never. Do you know that he who unites himself with a prostitute is one with, with her in body? For it is said, the two will become one flesh. But whoever is united with the Lord is one with him in spirit. As we go further down, see that we are, um, I'm gonna read. Do you not know, this is verse nineteen, do you not know that your bodies are temples of the Holy Spirit who is in you, whom you have received from God? You are not your own. You are bought at a price. Therefore, honor God with your bodies. You are redeemed. You are bought. So it's the same as me redeeming a bottle of juice at Seven-Elevens. Now that bottle of juice belongs to me. So you're set free from sin and death, and you're deemed at a high price. And Jesus, our Lord and Savior, redeemed each and every one of us by grace. So there's no, um, it's also again, what's mentioned, there's no, there's no gray. It's either you belong to God, or you belong to the devil. There's some scriptures here, uh, 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 I want to read to you. And you know, out of pride, we say, well, I can do my own thing. I do as I will, and nobody can tell me what to do. It's, it's my body. It's my mouth. Let's read Psalm twelve. And I'll read verse three to four. Psalm twelve, chapter three through four. Psalm twelve, verses three through four. May the Lord sound all flattering lips and every boastful tongue. Those who say, by our tongues we will prevail, our own lips will defend us. Who is lord over us? We read earlier that the body, when, belongs to God, and he's living inside our temples, we are bought at a high price. Just giving you a little taste, little appetizer. So let's dig in. Let's go to, uh, Numbers, chapter twenty-eight. We know that, uh, Joshua succeeded, uh, Moses. And we know that Moses sinned against God by striking the rock, and out of, uh, frustration and anger, he struck a rock to, um, to give water to the Israelites, who were murmuring and complaining. And I know it's very difficult to endure the persecution and the mist, you know, the, the mistreatment of the wicked. You get frustrated with them. But we have to just keep in mind that God knows all, and what he be, he allows is, is for the best. Okay. So Numbers twenty-eight, and I'm gonna give you another appetizer. Please write this down. Grain, olive oil, and wine. We see it mentioned many times when they're making sacrifices. So I'm gonna give you hints. Grain, olive oil, and wine. What do they mean? Don't worry, we're gonna get to it. Yeah, let's read Numbers twenty-eight. And I want y'all to understand that, um, these, um, Bible studies are giving us deeper insight, so we can relate to God more and more. This is not about historical knowledge and intellectual knowledge. This is not just information. This is eye for us to understand God more intimately. You gotta know your identity. You got to know your purpose and your destiny. The enemy is always attacking your identity. Once you have a sense that you are born again, you're a child of the living king, the enemy's always going to attack your identity to give you doubt, to discourage you. You have to be careful. And that's why you need to be in the presence of God. How? By attending Bible studies, not just this one. You can listen to recorded teachings of Dr. McGee, Dr. Vernon McGee, Discovering the Jewish Jesus, Rabbi K. A. Snyder. And now I found this wonderful teacher, Philip Anthony Mitchell. He's a pastor at the Twenty-eight Nineteen Church located in Georgia. And what I'm trying to say is, uh, be encouraged to listen to teachers of light. And they're not gonna be the typical teachers, you see, and you'll understand that each and every one received an initial encounter from God. Nobody studied their way, they studied their way to figure out who God is all about. They're, they were all called through a supernatural encounter. And I'll mention Sister Gail. She had an encounter, just like these men who are teaching congreg, a congregation of believers, their pastors, and, uh, you gotta know your identity. You gotta know that once you have an identity, you have a purpose. And once you know that you have a purpose, you know you have a destiny. All right. I'm sorry I'm going on and on. So let's go to Numbers twenty-eight. Sorry for the delay. The Lord said to Moses, give this command to the Israelites and say to them. Make sure that you're, that you present to me at the appointed time. My food offerings as an aroma pleasing to me. Say to them, this is the food offering you are to present to the Lord, two lambs a year old without defect. As a regular burnt offering each day. Offer one lamb in the morning and the other at twilight, together with a grain offering. Of a tenth of an ephah of the finest flour mixed with a quarter of a hen of oil. From pressed olives, wanna go by pressed olives. If you didn't know, before electricity. They would have, you'd have to press olives to keep your lamp burning. Pressed olives were used to light your lantern. And we see. That when Jesus is crushed. We are pressed. As well. We share in his sufferings and the more we see that we're sharing in his sufferings, we become a brighter witness. Let's go to fifty three verse four through five. It is written, surely he took up our pain and bore our suffering. Yet we considered him punished by God, stricken by him and afflicted. But he was pierced for our transgressions, he was crushed for our iniquities. The punishment that brought us peace was on him and by his wounds we are healed. Now. Let's jump into the New Testament, second Corinthians, chapter four, verse eight to nine. I want you to see the tie in here, pressed olives in verse five. It's us. We are hard pressed on every side, but not crushed. Perplexed, but not in despair. Persecuted, but not abandoned, struck down, but not destroyed. Come, let us return to the Lord. He has torn us to pieces, but he will heal us. He has injured us, but he will bind up our wounds, after two days, he. On the third day, he adore us, that may live in his presence. Let us acknowledge the Lord, let press on to acknowledge him. We're gonna be pressed. People are going to hate us, they're gonna put loads on our back. But this is designed for us to be conformed to the image of Christ. Now granted. We cannot redeem individuals from death. But we're gonna get a little take. Of being pressed. And that's how we become brighter. When we see the. When we see that God delivers, delivers us. From the wicked people on this earth. You see Daniel is an example of being pressed. People are jealous of him because of his favor with King Darius. But as it is written in Psalm seven. You're gonna fall in the pit that you reserve for others. And that made him a brighter witness, he was pressed. Okay, let's continue reading now, this is the regular burnt offering instituted at Mount Sinai. As a pleasing aroma, a food offering presented to the Lord. The accompanying. Drink offering is to be a quarter of a hen, a fermented drink with each lamb. Pour out the drink offering to the Lord at the sanctuary. Let's stop right there, verse seven, drink offering. Let's go to, um. Matthew. Believe it's Matthew, chapter twenty six, verses twenty seven through twenty eight. In the good Lord. Now everybody gets it twisted, it's not the last supper, it's a Passover meal. And as we know that Jesus is the Passover lamb. So I want you all to understand that. After Jesus was arrested, we're looking at Passover. Looking at preparation day. And we're looking at the Sabbath. And these, when you look at Sabbath preparation and Passover, okay, he's our Passover lamb. In the book of Exodus, all those who put the blood on their doorposts is just a foreshadow of us. Being in the blood of the lamb. Okay? It is written, drink from it, all of you, this is my blood of the covenant. Which is poured out for many, for the forgiveness of sins. So when we're covered in the blood, the devil knows that he can't touch us. Because as it is written, if God be for us, who can be against us? Okay? Please understand that. That we took. We drink, this is his blood. And we also see when he took the bread, this is my body that's broken for you. So I gave you hints. The grain. Which makes bread. Is the body of Christ. The olive oil. Is the spirit of Christ. The wine, the drink offering is the blood. All these sacrifices were pointing to Jesus, our Lord and Savior. It's a constant reminder. Of what is to come. Offer the second lamb at twilight along with the same kind of grain offering and drink offering. That you offer in the morning, this is a food offering and aroma pleasing to the Lord. On the Sabbath day. Make an offering of two lambs, a year old without defect. Together with its drink offering and a grain offering of two tenths of an ephah of the finest flour mixed with olive oil. This is the burnt offering for every Sabbath. Into the regular burnt offering and. So that is every Sabbath, every Saturday, as and as you know, as priests, they worked. Um, again, as a const, as a reminder, priests worked in the temple every day. Now, as my Jesus mentioned to the Pharisees. Hey, you're breaking the Sabbath, as my father's working, so too am I working. Because he's a high priest and it now trickles down to us, if we're born again. Not only are we God with a little. Not only we, uh, lords with a little L. But we are also priests. If Jesus is first fruit, that means we are first fruits. If Jesus is the heir, we are co-heirs, I hope you understand, so now when you're born again. Um, I I I was just listening to a sermon. I couldn't understand it at first, it says John the Baptist, no man was greater than John the Baptist, but the least of the kingdom is greater than him. That means us. The end of the Old Testament, the last prophet. Under the law, John the Baptist. No man ever. Greater than him, but the. Least of the kingdom was great, is greater than him, that means us, we're born again, we're reigning with Christ. And, um. It's a beautiful thing. So I'm gonna give you a little peek. Sabbath day, festival, new moon. We know who the Passover lamb is. Passover lamb is the Lord Jesus Christ. Verse eleven, on the. For every month, present to the Lord a burnt offering of two young bulls, one ram and seven male lambs. A year old, all without defect. With each bull, there is to be a grain offering of three tenths of an ephah of the finest flour mixed with oil. With the ram. A grain offering of two tenths of an ephah of the finest flour mixed with oil. And with each lamb, a grain offering of a tenth of the, an ephah of the finest flour mixed with oil. This is for a burnt offering, a plea, a food offering presented to the Lord. With each bull, there's to be a drink offering of of a half of a hen of wine. With the ram, a third of a hen, and with each lamb. A quarter of a hen, this is the monthly burnt offering to be made each new moon during the year. Besides a regular burnt offering with his drink offering, one male goat is to be presented to the Lord as a sin offering. Sabbath day, festival, new moon. When you read the Bible, the Holy Spirit will give you these key words to look, so you can make connections. Now, we're gonna read, um, verse seventeen again, um, we're gonna talk about yeast. So this is the, now we're gonna go, um, verse sixteen down. On the fourteenth day of the first month, the Lord's Passover is to be held. On the fifteenth day of this month, there is to be a festival for seven days. Eat bread made without yeast. This is a constant reminder, but it's it's, I'm going to admit, I have a lot of yeast. Man, I got a lot of yeast. First, when you read the scriptures and you look at from the service and you look at the Pharisees. Oh yeah, they they got a lot of yeast, they got all these manmade rituals and they they gave washing pots and washing, washing hands and. And all these philanthropies and it's it's just for show. But you know what? Man, I got a lot of yeast. Who do I have a lot of yeast, it's very humbling. And I thank God. That he's revealed that. And he should reveal it to all of us because now. We are gonna be in a position where we say, man, I'm flawed, I got a lot of yeast, I'm hypocritical, I'm a. I got so many flaws, I need a Savior. I need the Lord's Jesus Christ. Who's without blemish, without defect, no yeast, no shifting shadows. Eat bread without yeast. Let's go to Matthew, chapter sixteen, verse eleven through twelve, I know we went over these, uh, verses before, but it's a good reminder. This is Jesus speaking to his followers, his disciples. It is written. How is it you don't understand that what was not, that I was not talking to you about bread? But be on guard against the yeast of the Pharisees and the Sadducees. Then they understood that he was not telling them to, um, to guard against. Then they understood that he was not telling them to guard against it. He was telling them to guard against the teaching of the Pharisees and the Sadducees. Manmade teachings, hypocrisy. Prideful comments are yeast. Luke, chapter twelve, verse one, be on guard against the yeast of the Pharisees, which is hypocrisy. And I wanna stop right there. And I wanna make a connection. We early discussed, oh yeah. These are my lips, I can tell, I can say whatever I want, nobody can tell me what to do. This was a main platform and I know. I'm probably gonna, I'm I'm just probably gonna say, hey, you should shut up, London, you know, cause people are gonna get offended, but I'm gonna say it. We had an election and the main platform is, oh. I have a right, this is my body. And I tell you now, this was a beautiful encounter from God, uh, I'm not really into politics. But someone kept telling me, was talking to me about, um. Being with child. And I see a lot of yeast. See a lot of hypocrisy and it's not just pointing fingers, cause I know I have. I know there's a lot of hypocrisy with me, so I'm like, I'm, I know that God's saying guard your heart against the hypocrisy. Keep it transparent. With God, be transparent with other people. And, um. My, you know, my coworker was telling me, now how could that be, like when a woman says, I have the rights to my own body? But it clearly says, when she's pregnant, she is with child. So he's like, yeah, that means that there's another body, cause she is with child. Some may argue, well, you know, she's, she's young, she has a, um, pro-choice. She can decide whether she wants to terminate the pregnancy or. But then here's the hypocrisy and I'm gonna put a little, um, a little story to give you a broader, um, understanding. Becky. She's going to, let's say Yale. Her parents have invested in her education, she has aspirations of becoming a lawyer. She finds out that she's pregnant. With. And and with twins. Now she says, mom, that, uh, I'm contemplating, I I need to have an abortion because. There's no way. I can continue on in college, my dream of being a lawyer is flushed down the drain. Parents say, you know, yeah, we have invested a lot of money with in in your education and this would be a a major, um. Uh, roadblock, this is your career. And, uh. This will be the worst for you. Now they're supporting Becky, saying, you know. Abort, have an abortion, you're young, whenever you're ready to have a family, then you can have children. Now let's say, on the flip side of a coin. Becky, unfortunately, God forbid, gets murdered. Now, the parents obviously are crushed. The emotions. Are kindled, they 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 don't want the best for that person who has. Committed a heinous crime. They want this person tried and thrown in prison. And they want the worst for that individual. Who murdered Becky. And now. And now this individual is indicted and is being tried for three counts of murder. Before, it was just Becky. Now, do you see the yeast? Do you see the hypocrisy? When it was about Becky's aspirations of becoming a lawyer, oh, that, that, getting abortion. Those are not, those are not bodies. It's, it's just, you just get rid of it. But now on the flip side of the coin, now they want justice to be served. I'll be even further. You know, back in the biblical times and, and Scott is very good. He does his research. Moloch, they say you used to sacrifice children to Moloch. M O L E C H. And you know, right now in this day and age, we see that things are more cleverly done, more subtle, more cleverly disguised. Nobody's gonna uh, mug somebody out in the street. Say, hey, give it up. I got you. No, it's like through cyberspace. People robbing people blind through the internet and you won't even know what hit you. Now, instead of people just bringing their children to be sacrificed in an altar, now everybody's like, oh wow. Education's good. Like money is okay, but then when you have a love for the education to the point where you will sacrifice little children to serve your God. You make education, if you love education more than God, anything you love more than God is your idol and you are sacrificing these children to serve your idol. My career, I have aspirations to become an NFL star. Oh man, I can, got, get, afford this baby, cause you know, it's gonna hinder my career. No way. I can't afford it. It's gonna, I, I'm gonna be doomed. No, I gotta, I gotta, I want my dream to be fulfilled. I'm gonna do whatever it takes. You gotta be careful. We do not belong to ourselves. Jesus brought us, not just literally, spiritually, body, spirit, everything. You belong to him. You don't live yourselves. And people might say, oh, London, you know, you're not a woman. You know how it is. Still to this day, I realize, man, I, I don't live for myself. It's not me that's living in me. I was dead. Now I gotta suffer and share in the sufferings of Christ. I'm bought at a high price. I don't go back to the lifestyle I did, but let me tell you, when you do flirt with it, child of God, God is gonna chase me. He's gonna rebuke you and he's gonna discipline you. So please be on guard of the yeast. This modern day culture is gonna lead you astray to believe that it's all right. God understands. This is my dream. All these man-centered gospels that you hear is focusing on the, of man, not the will of God. The will of God is our food, as Jesus says. And we're malnourished when we think we can do whatever we want to do. And you know what? It always breeds death. Always breeds death. No matter how you slice it, it always breeds death, disobedience. Again, I'm gonna uh, remind you, Sabbath day, festival, new moon. So we have three. Jesus, the reason why the um, woman who came in with spices, they wanted to and uh, pre- prepare the body. They came in too late. You know why? Cause his body was, and it was preparation day. That's what I wanna drive at. Preparation day, Passover, Sabbath. His body was already prepared by Nicodemus and Joseph and Allos, Cassia, and Myrrh. Body was already dressed, already prepared, now laid to rest. You see what I'm pointing at? All these rituals that they participated in and all these feasts, all these festivals, all these Sabbath day observances were pointed to Christ. So the new moon Sabbath day festival. I'm gonna get there. So just bear with me one moment and um, going back with child. I want you all to understand that the more you engage in the word, the more you'll see that you're in the presence of God. You see, when you put two and two together, Jesus says, I'm the shepherd, right? I'm the good shepherd. He also says he's the word. So the word will shepherd your heart. The word, when you hear the word, that's the word shepherding, is being a shepherd to your heart. Don't go over there, go here. And if you go over there, the more and more you read the scriptures, you'll hear his voice. It's not this head knowledge. It's actually surviving the wilderness. You are, but like you, we all like sheep. We easily go astray. We get easily distracted by the pleasures of this world. Watching TV more often than reading the Bible. Watching sports or any distractions, any things that's inappropriate, we like sheep, we wander. But thanks be to God that we have the word, our shepherd to bring us back with the flock. So beware of hypocrisy. This modern day culture that we are living in today is not based on truth. It's based on emotions, feelings, not the word, not a solid foundation. There on the fourteenth day of the first month, the Lord's Passover is to be held. On the fifteenth day of this month, there is to be a festival for seven days. Eat bread without yeast. On the first day, hold a sacred assembly and do no regular work. Present to the Lord a food offering consisting of a burnt offering of two young bulls, one ram and seven male lambs a year old, all without defect. With each bull, offer a grain offering at three tenths of an ephah of the finest flour mixed with oil. With the ram, two tenths, and with each of the seven, um, seven lambs, one tenth. Include one male goat as a sin offering, a male atonement for you. Offer these in addition in the regular morning burnt offering. In this way, present the food offering every day for seven days as an aroma pleasing to the Lord. It is to be offered in addition to the regular burnt offering and its drink offering. On the seventh day, hold a sacred assembly and do no regular work. On the day of first fruits, when you present the Lord an offering of new grain during the festival weeks, hold a sacred assembly and do no regular work. Again, what are first fruits? You saw that depicted in Malachi. And um, I'm, I'll take a little brief journey. When they took first fruits from their, their land, they brought the first fruits to the Levites and they brought the first fruits to the barn. Let's think about it. It's a parable. It's a riddle. And Jesus is the first fruits and he's gonna take the first fruits back home. That's all it is. He's bringing his children, his first fruit children, born again, redeemed believers back home. As mentioned in John chapter fourteen, in my father's house there many mansions. You, you're the mansions. So wherever I take you, you'll be with me. I go prepare a place for you. I'm taking you home. Your first fruits. You see that in Leviticus chapter twenty-three? See it all over. First fruit offerings represent Jesus, our first fruit king and his redeemed first fruit people. It is written, Christ has indeed been raised from the dead. The first fruits of those who have fallen asleep. But since death came through a man, the resurrection of the dead comes also through a man. For as in Adam, all die. So in Christ, all will be made alive. But each in turn, Christ the first fruit, then when he comes, those who belong to him, we are first fruits. We are the children, precious, born again, children. That's why they had these festivals. That's why they had the new moon. This is all pointing to Jesus dying on the cross so he can redeem his first fruit children. And these first fruit children are going to be suffering with him. They're gonna share, they're gonna share in his sufferings. They're going to be commissioned to spread the good news, to make disciples of many men and women throughout all the nations. So we have to, again, we gotta know our identity. We gotta know our purpose and our destiny. So now if you're first fruit, you know you're not gonna be sitting around. We're not working to be saved, but we work because we are saved. We are commissioned, just like Noah. We are commissioned, just like Nehemiah. We are commissioned, just like Moses. They're first roots. Yeah. We are commissioned to spread the good news. Just the way a stream of people came our way proclaiming the gospel, and I admit, I didn't give a good response. Okay, there's some Jesus lovers here. We know about Jesus, but no, you too much into Jesus. But because of God's love, he kept sending teachers, people on the street. They were commissioned to rescue you. So you gotta understand that we here are also, we have to have a soldier mindset. We are, we have, we are on a rescue mission. And all those first roots out there, they're missing in action. And our duty is to get them, retrieve them and bring them back. We can say them, refer to them as sheep, lost sheep. So like when Jesus mentions that I left the ninety-nine to get that one sheep, he uses us to go get that sheep. We're a community. We're not here to gossip about somebody's shortcomings and and ridicule them and mock, mock them. We pray for them. We go out to rescue them. That's our assignment. We wanna please our commanding officer. And it's gonna be a battle. That's why the enemy is fighting us tooth and nail. Because he knows that the mysterious treasure, the hope of glory resides in a jar of clay. Your first fruits, because he's first fruits, means the best of the best. Now I'm gonna go to uh, the close of um, chapter twenty-eight. And uh, all these, again, all these sacrifices were done because they're pointing to Jesus, our sacrificial lamb from the foundation of the world. Again, I'm gonna say these key words again. Sabbath day, festival, new moon. This is a plan. And I'm gonna read you Colossians chapter two, verses sixteen through seventeen. Therefore, do not let anyone judge you by what you eat or drink, all with regard to a religious festival, new moon celebration, or a Sabbath day. These are shadows of the things that were to come. The reality, however, is found in Christ. I'm obligated to observe Yom Kippur. No, you're not. And I'm gonna go to Romans chapter fourteen to let you have a deeper understanding. A lot of people are lost. They say, well, you know, God's the same. He's the truth. He never changes. So you know, um, we gotta observe this festival here or the feast of trumpets. We gotta observe this. No, you don't. You're not obligated. You, you're free. You have been set free from the law of sin and death, and now you're bound to the law of the spirit, as it is written in Romans chapter eight. You gotta understand that your freedom is because you're in the presence of God. Not only are you in the presence of God, but the presence of God is residing in you. That's how you know you're free. When you realize that the power is conforming you into the image of Christ through his sufferings, you start to understand what it's like to be, oh, man, your mother thinks that you're out of your mind, or people think, oh man, this guy's, you can't ha- hold him in high esteem. Who is this guy? We're starting to share in the afflictions of Christ, the sufferings of Christ. Why? Is because we are being conformed to his image. If Joseph is thrown in the pit, if Daniel is thrown in the pit, if Jeremiah is thrown in the pit, we also gonna be thrown in pits and cisterns, specked up, perplexed, confused because we have this all surpassing power residing in us as a gift, as by grace. Jesus is our resting place. That's why he said, take my yoke. Don't take the yoke of the law of sin and death. You can't obey the law of sin and death. Believe in me. The law was instituted as a guardian and it's pointing to Jesus Christ, who can set us free. Now, but both brother of the law and brother outside of law are justified by what? Faith in the promise that was given to Abraham. Look home pack three sixty to the Abrahamic covenant. When he merely believed and he was considered righteous for believing what he heard. And all the children of promise, all the first fruits from generation to generation are not justified by the works of the law. They're justified by their faith in that promise of eternal life. Believe in the Lord Jesus Christ, you'll have eternal life. We need to grow up, not as adults, but children, children believe. That someone made this uh, statement to me. I was with my, I'm always with mine when she was like around three and, and this, these grandparents were pushing their grandchildren on the, on the swing. And he said something that was very profound to me. He says, children are the most powerful when they have someone to trust. The more we trust him as like, like little children, the more and more we see that we are powerful. We believe in, we don't worry. We know that our Father's gonna take good care of us through Yesure. So remember, I'm gonna go to Romans chapter fourteen. Some people are weak in the faith, some are strong. Some say, I don't eat pork. No, I don't want, but we know, I mean, for me, I know that the pork that God was talking about is people. Swine. They worship many gods. They're considered filthy pigs. The Gentiles, they worship many gods, Baal, Moloch, whatever, whatever god you can think of. So that's why the Jews did not associate with Gentiles. You see, it's a foreshadow of second Corinthians chapter six. What does light have to do with darkness? We're looking at it as from a physical, it's like a physical foreshadow, right? Cause in the Old Testament, Israel actually not supposed to associate with Gentiles, but now Jesus was breaking down that barrier. And, and we read again, we read before and I'll read it again. He's making the two into one humanity, both Jew and Gentile. You can say that Jesus was eating pig because he was speaking to this Samaritan woman. He was having fellowship with her. People who are weak in the faith, and I, I, I'm not gonna knock them. If they, if they feel, hey, I, I wanna stick to that. I don't eat pork, you know, Peter say, hey, I'm not eating People say, hey, I'm not eating pork. I, I don't eat anything unclean. And Jesus said, the Holy Spirit says, don't say that what I make clean is unclean. He was referring to Cornelius, the Gentile. We, we referred as pigs, the low, the lows of the lows. But now. We are invited. We once didn't receive mercy, but now as Gentiles we have. So if someone says, listen, um, Michael, London, I don't really feel comfortable in eating pork, then you know. I will friend from that. Okay, I respect that. I'm not gonna say, you know, what I know. You know, you gotta eat pork, cause you know, no, out of love. Okay, I can understand. Let's go to Romans chapter fourteen. It's all about days, about what you eat. And it sums it all up, really. I, I, I think so. But let's read. And I want you, um, again, just be a Berean. Go to the scriptures. When we send you these scriptures, go read the scriptures for yourselves. The scriptures are your foundation of truth. Now, in my Bible says, the weak and the strong. I'm gonna read from Romans chapter fourteen and then we'll go to the next chapter. Accept the one whose faith is weak. Without quarreling over disputable matters, one person's faith allows him to eat anything. But another whose faith is weak eats only vegetables. The one who eats everything was not treated with contempt, the one who does not. And the one who does not eat everything must not judge the one who does. But God has accepted them. Who are you to judge someone else's servant? To their own master servants stand or fall, on fall. And they will stand, for the Lord is able to make them stand. So if somebody wants to observe Yom Kippur, fine, that's fine. You wanna observe Rosh Hashanah? Fine, that's between you and God. You wanna observe, you wanna observe Pentecost? Fine, that's, that. Your freedom, that's between you and God, but it's not mandated. You wanna observe Passover? That's fine. You probably wanna reminisce. You want to have a intimate relationship with, with Christ and say, yeah, this is the day that you. You know, you were the Passover lamb. You took our niquities and now we're covered in the blood, we're marked, we're protected. One person considers one day more sacred than another. Another considers every day alike. Each of them should be fully convinced in their own mind. Whoever regards one day as special, thus so to the Lord. Whoever eats meat, thus so to the Lord. For they give thanks to God, and whoever abstains, thus so to the Lord, and gives thanks to God. But none of us lives for ourselves alone. See that? None of us lives for ourselves alone. If we live, we live for the Lord. And if we die, we die for the Lord. So whether we live or die, we belong to the Lord. For this very reason, Christ died and returned to life, so that he might be the Lord of both the dead and the living. You then, why do you judge your brother or sister? Or why do you treat them with contempt? For we will stand, all stand before God's judgment seat. It is written, as surely as I live, says the Lord, every knee will bow before me, every tongue will acknowledge God. So then each of us will give an account of ourselves to God. I'm gonna read further. We're getting there. Therefore, let us stop passing judgment on one another. Instead, make up your mind, not to put up any stumbling block or obstacle in the way of a brother or sister. I'm convinced, being fully persuaded in the Lord Jesus, that nothing is unclean in itself, in itself. But if anyone regards something as unclean, then for that person, it is unclean. If your brother or sister is distressed because of what you eat, you are no longer acting well. Do not by your eating destroy someone for whom Christ died. Therefore, do not let what you know is good be spoken of as evil. For the kingdom of God is not a matter of eating and drinking. But of righteousness, peace, and joy in the Holy Spirit. Because anyone who serves Christ in this way is pleasing to God and receives human approval. I'm gonna stop right there. So, the Passover, preparation day. All these festivals. We know that they're pointing to the Lord Jesus Christ. Yahshua. Is making this invitation to his rest. And what is this rest? The new heaven and earth. Where you'll be in his presence. He made that promise to the thief on the right-hand side of the cross. Very, very, I say to you today, you will walk with me in paradise. Enter my rest. Those who believe will enter that rest. As uh, as another sample, Joshua. He says, I will give you rest by giving you this land. You see, the promised land is not the actual land. It's like a dress rehearsal. It's a prototype. It's a sample. It's a preview of the ultimate. Strabat Rest. Where we'll be in the presence of our dwelling place. We'll be in the sheltered presence of Jesus. Our dwelling place, where there's nothing but peace, joy, love. Numbers twenty-nine. It's pretty much a branch of uh, of numbers chapter twenty-eight. And um. I just want you to get a glimpse of what these Old Testament scriptures are pointing to. And. It's a beautiful journey. Sometimes it can be frustrating, but you know, thanks be to God. The Holy Spirit will guide you in all truths. And let you know that, look at what we. Are free from. We're no longer under the yoke where you have to remember, remember each and every day. This appointment, you have to rest. This day you gotta rest. This time you gotta sacrifice sheep, bulls, and. Again, I, I'm still like, how did they follow through with this? By the grace, I, I, I couldn't do it. I, I couldn't do it. But thanks be to God that we are, we are under grace. But I'm not, I'm not gonna say that, since we're under grace, we don't. Be conformed to the ways of Christ. We're learning to. Walk in obedience. And now obedience is faith in the character of Christ, the fruits of the Spirit. There's no longer, there's no law against the um, the Holy Spirit. There's no law. And I'll read that to you really briefly, and then let's go to numbers twenty-nine, and then we'll go to numbers thirty. I know that uh, you have been waiting patiently, and I'll uh. I don't want to uh, take all night, cause I know everybody would like to rest. But I'll go to uh, Galatians. Just remember, be like little children. Believe in the good news. Believe in the good news. Believe. And you will be credited righteous. Thou be credited as righteousness to you. All right. Let's read here. Galatians chapter five, verse twenty-two. But the fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, forbearance, kindness. Goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. Against such things, there is no law. There's no law opposing you. Why? Because you have the Holy Spirit within you. Now you can try and um. Attain righteousness on the basis of works of the law. But you cannot please God from the rum of the flesh. You are actually a slave under the law. But again, Jesus redeemed the slaves who were held under the custody of the law. He freed us. By giving us his spirit. Now we know we're no longer bound to the law. We're no longer yoked to that law. We are yoked to him. That's why he says, come. All you who are heavy-laden and burdened, tired and weary, come to me and I'll give you rest. For my yoke is easy. I'm gentle. Wherever the spirit of the Lord is, there's freedom. That's in second Corinthians chapter three, verse seventeen. You're not free when you have millions of dollars in the bank. You're not free when you have convenience at your fingertips, where you can drive here, you can fly there. There's no freedom unless you're born again. There's no law against you because you have the Holy Spirit within you. Okay, let's go back here and I'll read it to you and uh. On the first day of the seventh month, hold a sacred assembly and do regular, and do no regular work. It is day for you to sound the trumpets. As an aroma pleasing to the Lord, offer a burnt offering of one young bull, one ram and seven. Male, um, seven male lambs a year old, all without defect. With the bull offer a grain offering of three tenths of an ephah of the finest flour mixed with olive oil. With the ram, two tenths, and with each of the seven lambs, one tenth. Include one male goat as a sin offering to make atonement for you. These are in addition to the monthly and daily burnt offerings with their grain offerings and drink offerings as specified. They are food offerings presented to the Lord as a pleasing aroma. Again, it's all focused on, it's, it's a. It's all focused on Jesus Christ. On the tenth day of this seventh month, hold a sacred assembly. You must deny yourselves and do no work. Present an aroma pleasing to the Lord. A burnt offering of one young bull, one ram and seven male. Um, seven male lambs a year old, all without defect. With the bull offer a grain offering of three tenths of an ephah of the finest flour mixed with oil. With the ram, two tenths, and then with each of the seven lambs, one tenth. Include one male goat as a sin offering, in addition to the sin offering for atonement. And regular burnt offering with its grain offering. Then we have the festival of pabarnacles. On the fifteenth day of the seventh month, hold a sacred assembly and do no regular work. Celebrate a festival to the Lord for seven days. Present as, present as an aroma pleasing to the Lord. I can go on and on and on about the festival's fifth day. Again, it all sums up in Colossians two, verse sixteen through seventeen. And um, I'm gonna go to um, numbers thirty, but I want you all to understand. Some people say, well. If I just do this and I obey this. You have the spirit, your, your spirit led. You are going to be mistreated because Christ is living in you. People are gonna hate you. They'll say for no reason. I don't know why. I just can't stand this person. I hate this person. Sometimes you're gonna get burdens on your back. People taking advantage of you. People taking you for granted. Draining you. But I'm gonna go to Galatians again, just to let you know what the point of the law is. It was a schoolmaster, a guardian. To let us know that we with our fallen nature cannot obey God. Even though the law was meant to be good, but because of the weakness of our flesh, it only reaped more death. More sin. And again, as I mentioned last week. Devil does not care about the law, but he knows that he can keep us under the law. He'll keep us hostage. Right? Because he knows the more we sin, the more the law will keep us. What? Enslaved to death. So we need a redeemer. To redeem us from the law of sin and death. I'm gonna read Galatians chapter, uh, I believe it's five. Galatians chapter five, verse one. It is for freedom that Christ has set us free. Stand firm then, and do not let yourselves be burdened again by a yoke of slavery. The yoke of slavery, see, Jesus says, don't take the yoke of slavery. You're no longer under the law. You're no longer a slave. And I'll even go back here. The two covenant women, Hagar and Sarah, they represent two covenants. Okay, going back to verse twenty-four. It says, the women represent two covenants. One covenant is from Mount Sinai and bears children who are to be slaves. This is Hagar. Now Hagar stands for Mount Sinai in Arabia. And corresponds to the present city of Jerusalem, because she is in slavery with her children. They're slaves under the law. But now, it is the, now when we go to verse one, chapter five. It is for freedom that Christ has set us free. We're free. The law was a guardian, and I'll, I'll, I'll read, I'll read that to you. And just give me one moment as I get there. Here we go. Galatians chapter three, verse twenty-three. You see, when we were, and I learned a lot. I know Brother Scott, I learned a lot. I, I, when I, when I, when you hit New Testament, oh, I, I didn't realize that Jesus was born. To a, a woman under the law. Everything was under the law until the cross. Because they were, you know, they presented Jesus just like they did in the Old Testament. They presented him to Simeon with two doves. Parents couldn't afford bulls. They were poor, and they presented him because he's a firstborn. And firstborn is always supposed to be set apart to um, for service. And priests serve, just like um. Uh, Samuel, when Hannah made that, uh, made that proposal. That if you give me a son, you'll, I'll give him up to the, to, to serve. Under Eli, the priest. But um, I'm gonna read this to you. Galatians chapter three, verse twenty-three. Before the coming of this fate. We were held in custody under the law. So now every time we sin, the devil's like, hey, just like, I ain't gonna let your people go. Let my people go. Nah, you know, cause the law says that if they sin. I'm not gonna let them go. I'm sad living here. Can't let them go. Let my people go. Nah, I love having them as slaves under the law. I'm not letting them go. But before the coming of this fate, we were held in custody under the law. Locked up until the fate that was to come would be revealed. So the law was our guardian until Christ came, that we might be judged by faith. Now, this fate has come. Now, this faith has come, we are no longer under a guardian. So in Christ Jesus, you are all children of God through faith, not through the works of the law. Through faith. Lord died, rose again. You believe this? Paul was saying, Pharisee or Pharisees, you are set free. You, you believe what you heard. You're free. So in Christ Jesus, you are all children of God through faith. For all of you who were baptized in Christ have clothed yourselves with Christ. Now, when we read, when we fellowship, when we have a sense of community, we worship together, we pray together. We're in the presence of God, we're no longer naked, doing our own thing out in darkness. Now we're under, we are clothed in His presence, we're no longer naked. You see, Adam and Eve were clothed in the presence of God before the fall. But when they disobeyed, they were stripped from His presence because God does not tolerate sin. But thanks be to God. I, I wasn't gonna go to this, but in, in, in Galatians, chapter three, he, he's, he's frustrated with the Galatians because they think they can go back to the means of the flesh. Oh, well, you know, we gotta observe this, we gotta observe that, and we gotta do this, and we gotta do that. You know, maybe by the means of the flesh, you know, after we heard the good news, m- maybe we can just uh, try, try and please God with the flesh and and go back to these miserable principles again. Why do you wanna be enslaved again? The law was a guardian. Held you in custody until the faith of Christ came. And this is what he says in Galatians, chapter three. You foolish Galatians, who has bewitched you? Before your very eyes, Jesus was clearly betrayed as crucified. I'd like to learn just one thing from you. Did you receive the Spirit by the works of the law? Or by believing what you heard? Are you so foolish, after beginning by means of the Spirit, you are now trying to finish by means of the flesh? As Brother Scott said, go ahead, go ahead, try and please God through the flesh. Go try to, um, observe every, um, day and try to obey every stroke of the law by the means of the flesh. Go ahead. Or you believe that Jesus is just a nice teacher and he's not God? Go ahead. You be a slave under the, you be a slave in custody of the law. You be held hostage. But I'm gonna say this again. God knows who are His. It's in Second Timothy, chapter two, verse nineteen. This is recorded, so you can't write everything I'm telling you. It's recorded, you can take your time and digest whatever I'm giving you. Eat these words, please. Stop trying to please God and think that you have something to do with it. Accept the gift of God. If you see streams of people coming to you proclaiming the good news, kiss God's feet. That means he's wooing you. He's drawing you. No man can come to him lest the Father draws him. And nobody comes to the Father but by Me. So just like little Jesus was in awe. Father, I'm so glad that you revealed this to the babes. Those who receive encounters from God, those are gifts. That's why we're like trees in dew. Dewing our branches. Why? Because we're in the presence of God. He's a water and spirit. Before we were born again, we were like a, we were like a, a tumbleweed. We were like briarwoods. We were, we, we were thorn bushes. We were dead. But now when we're in the presence of God, there's water. We are fresh every time we hear our shepherd speaking, and we drink in his words. All who come, come to Me, all who are thirsty. If you're thirsty for wisdom that will set you free from the snares of death, then come to Him. Because now when we have this water inside of us, streams are gonna come out of our mouth. That's why he said scriptures will come out of us like living water. We will give nothing but wisdom inside of us. We're like wells of water. And we s- speaking wisdom to set people free. It's not us, it's Christ in us doing the work through us. We're just vessels. Alright, let's go to uh, numbers, chapter thirty. And I know uh, people say this is Old Testament, but we realize that when there's marriage, the woman's supposed to submit to the husband. It doesn't mean that the husband is gonna be a dictator and just uh, be abusive, but the more there's respect on both parties. The husband takes care of the bride as his own body. He will do whatever it takes to take care of the weaker vessel. And the woman will respect her husband and do submission. And um, I, I remember seeing this um, this reel. It was a quick reel. A woman said, hey, how do you submit to your husband? How, how's that possible? Like, well, you know, in this day and age, women, you know, they're free, they're independent. And she said this, the more I submit to my husband, the more he has, the more he trusted me. And so when I submitted to him, I said, hey, you're the head of the household. And the more she respected him, the more hi- her husband was inclined to say, man, I, I really trust your opinion on this, or I trust you. What do you think I should do? So she said, she said, wow, it's like full circle. It was like, I wasn't dictating to him. Uh, you should do this, I, I'll wear the pants in the family, but the more he respected her, the more he favored her input. She said, you should do it this way, hon. He says, you know what? That's a good idea. I should do it that way. You see how the two walk together as one? And that's how we see with Jesus and the Father. He receives, he inherited the name from the Father, just the way a woman inherits the name of her husband. They have one name. You see the picture now? So, let's go to numbers thirty and then uh, we'll just wrap everything up. And this is ma- this is ma- um, basically, uh, based on uh, on vows. That's what I come, came up with. So numbers, chapter thirty. Moses said to the heads of the tribes of Israel, this is what the Lord commands. When a man makes a, when a man makes a vow to the Lord or takes an oath to obligate himself by pledge, he must not break his word, but must do everything he said. And now I'm gonna go to Ecclesiastes, chapter five, verses one through six. And then you're gonna see another key, uh, you're gonna see another, uh, uh, key, you're gonna see key words, messenger of the temple. Now, if you were, um, been with us in a journey, uh, for um, uh, Malachi, we see that the messenger of the temple is Jesus. And uh, it was a prophecy of um, John the Baptist making way of the messenger, which is Jesus. And he took the temple, our body. So I'm gonna go, go to Ecclesiastes, chapter five. Uh, verse one through six. Ecclesiastes, chapter five, one through six. Just spare me one moment as I get there. Ecclesiastes, chapter five, verse one through the six, just spare me as I get there. So on up, it's on vows. Now in the Old Testament, if you make a vow, you, you can't go back on your word, even if it hurts. I'm not gonna go into that story, but uh, I know Brother Scott knows where exactly, um, where it is, um, he knows exactly where it is. I know, um, I don't know, the name was in the book of Judges, and he made a vow, he, he, he was like very, uh, doubtful, he didn't know that. He says, no, I don't know, I'm not confident that I'm gonna win this, uh, have this victory. But you know what? The first person that walks through the door, so I, I know that I am guaranteed victory. I'm gonna make a sacrifice. And with, and his, his daughter entered the, um, the door when he go turned home from victory. So he had to keep his word. And uh, Brother Scott, I don't wanna leave them out there, but if you can find that verse, um, I know it's there in Judges. And I just want them to read for themselves, that, that, I don't want them to take my word for it. Yeah, it's Jeff, uh, what, what, what chapter is that? It's in the book of Judges, Jeff.
Uh, uh, now, I'm, I'm looking, I'm, I'm bringing it for you now, brother.
Okay, so while, um, Brother Scott, my big brother finds that verse, you know, um, again, we're gonna read, uh, Ecclesiastes, chapter five, verse one through six. Guard your steps when you go to the house of God. Go near to listen rather than to offer the sacrifice of fools. Who do not know what they're, um, who do not know that they do wrong. Do not be quick with your mouth. And do not be hasty in your heart to utter anything before God. God is in heaven and you are on earth. So let your words be few. A dream comes when there are many, um, there are many cares, and many words mark the speech of a fool. When you make a vow to God, do not delay to fulfill it. He has no pleasure in fools. Fulfill your vow. It is better not to make a vow than to make one and not fulfill it. Do not let your mouth lead you into sin. And do not protect, do not protest to the temple messenger. My vow was a mistake. Why should God be angry at what you say and destroy the work of your hands? So if you're reading, if you wanna know about that story, go to Judges, chapter eleven, verse thirty-four. Go to Judges, chapter eleven. And it just shows you the weight, the weight on flesh. The ways of God is good. When we have His Spirit, when we have His nature, this is not a burden. But without His, um, the divine nature, oh man, keeping an oath is a, uh, and this is the yeast I'm talking about. Me, okay? Oh yeah, um, you're falling behind this bill. If you, uh, make a payment arrangement, um, we'll keep the service on. Okay, I, I could do it. I'll pay a hundred dollars a week. Yeah, I can do it. And all of a sudden, circumstances come up. Can't do it. And file through their agreement. So yeah, you gotta be transparent. You gotta say, hey, God, you know what? Man, I can't even keep a vow. And you know what Jesus said? Um, in Matthew, chapter five, verse thirty-three through thirty-seven. Let's take a journey there. You see the beautiful promise? You see how beautiful the new covenant is? We have a high priest. Who know, oh, not only intercedes for us, but man, he's, he's our shepherd. He laid down his life for us. Matthew, chapter five, verse thirty-three to thirty-seven. Again, you have heard that it was said to the people long ago, do not break your oath. But fulfill to the Lord the vows you have made. But I tell you, do not swear an oath at all, either by heaven, for it is God's throne. You see, that was mentioned, and he's talk, he knows he's talking about Ecclesiastes. But anyway, but I tell you, do not swear an oath at all, either by heaven, for it is God's throne. Or by the earth, for it is His footstool. Or by Jerusalem, for it is the city of the great king. And do not swear by your head, for you cannot make even one hair white or black. All you need to say is simply yes or no. Anything beyond this comes from the evil one. So people say, what's the big deal? You know, like, London, you know, that, that, that was the circumstances. You, you really had a good intentions of paying that bill and using, um, you try to, um, have a payment agreement. You couldn't file through, you know how it is. But when we see this word, oh my goodness, we have to be thankful that we have a Savior. May your yes be yes and your no be no. Can you pay it? No, I cannot. I know it's easy said, and then, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to tell, um, remind all of us that we are in dire desperate need of a Savior. Need to believe in Him. That's our righteousness. Man, you, you have to have laid down your life for me. There's no way. No way I could do this on my own. Have mercy on me, a sinner. Don't be confident in your own righteousness. And I know some of us do, and I, and I raise my hand, or at least I'm not a murderer. I never murdered nobody. I'm not a thief. I never, I never dealt drugs. I never sold them like that. No, I'm I'm decent. I'm a law-abiding, law-abiding a citizen. I'm not the diddler. I don't molest boys. Beat your breasts. I can't even make a vow. That's how strong my nature is. My God, have mercy on me, a sinner. Please, I pray, and just be like that thief on the right-hand side of the cross. Look, we deserve this, okay? Our deeds brought us here. This man, this God has done nothing wrong. But you remember me when you enter your kingdom. When we see that we are in need of forgiveness, please, that is the Holy Spirit drawing you. I am in need of your mercy, my goodness. I need your mercy by the buckets, buckets and buckets of water. I need your mercy. Have mercy on me. So don't try. It's good to be honest. I understand that. But that's the beauty of, uh, mercy. So I'm gonna just, uh, finish up here. And I know that you have been very patient with us, and I do appreciate that, as we are trying to serve you as much as we can. And I'll finish reading. When a young woman still living in her father's household makes a vow to the Lord or obligates herself by pledge, and her father hears about her vow or pledge, but says nothing to her, then all her vows and every pledge by which she obligated herself will stand. But if her father forbids her when he hears about it, none of her vows or the pledges by which she have obligated herself will stand. The Lord will release her because her father has forbidden her. So wherever you bind, you know, he, he heard all these sayings, wherever you bind on earth will be bound in heaven, wherever you loose on earth will be loosed in heaven. So we know that we, born again believers, wherever we bind will receive the approval of God. And wherever we loose, we have the approval of God. I'll give you an example. A man is sinning against the church. You, you go to that person one-on-one, then you take two or three witnesses, still not repenting. Then you take the whole congregation. He still refuses to repent. Bind him. He, he's no longer gonna have fellowship. You want him to come to repentance. You hand him over, you hand him over, you hand his, him, well, you want his flesh handed over to Satan, so then he will finally come to his senses and says, oh man, this is, this is too much. I, I miss with my family and the church of believers. You know, I did wrong. So now, he's loosed. So wherever you loo- and earth will be loosed in heaven. If she marries, after she makes a vow or after the, uh, a last promise by which she obligates herself and her husband hears about it but says nothing to her, then her vows or the pledges by which she obligated herself will stand. But if her husband forbids her when he hears about it, he nullifies the vow that obligates her Or the rash promise by which she obligates herself, and the Lord will release her. So she's no longer bound to that obligation, that vow, she's released. I know in this day and age, again, going back, this is my body, I can do whatever I want, I don't care what my husband says, he doesn't understand what I'm going through. Well, look at the Old Testament, look at how. Any vow or obligation taken by a widow or divorced woman will be binding on her. If a woman living with her husband makes a vow or obligates herself by a pledge under oath and her husband bears. Um, hears about it, but says nothing to her and does not forbid her, then all her vows, all the pledges, yes, she will be bound, she's bound to those pledges. By which she's obligated herself will stand, but if her husband nullifies them when he hears about them, then none of the vows. Or pledges that came from her lips will stand, her husband has nullified them and the Lord will release her. Her husband may confirm or nullify any vows she makes or any sworn pledge to deny herself. But if her husband says nothing to her about it from day to day. Then he confirms all her vows, all the pledges binding on her. He confirms them by, um, saying to her when he hears about them. If however, he nullifies them sometime after the Lord hears about them, then he must bear the consequences of her wrongdoing. These are the regulations of the Lord. Gave Moses, um, the Lord gave Moses concerning relationships between a man and his wife and between a father and his young daughter still living at home. Wow. You don't see that in this day and age, for the most, for the most part. And uh, I'll close with this. When we go to uh. Let me see if I can find it here, I know it's in Ephesians five twenty-two. Um, this bit, one moment. Just taking, I'm just taking a journey and that's it. This is uh, Ephesians chapter five, verse twenty-one going down, submit to one another out of reverence for Christ. Wives, submit yourselves to your own husbands as you do to the Lord, for the husband is the head of the wife, as Christ is the head of the church. His body, which he is the Savior. Now, the church submits to Christ, so also wives should submit to their husbands in everything. Not some things, everything. Husbands love your wives, just as Christ loved the church and gave himself up for her. To make her holy, cleansing her by the washing with the water through the word, and to present her to himself. As a radiant church without stain or wrinkle, or any other blemish. But holy and blameless, in the same way husbands ought to love their wives as their own bodies. He who loves his wife loves himself. After all, no one ever hated their own body. But they feed and care for their body, just as Christ does the church, for we are members of his body. So we took a whole journey. We are not our own. Our bodies do not belong to ourselves, our lips don't belong to ourselves, we have been redeemed. And we must understand. Again, it's written again, over and over, you are not your own, you're bought at a price. A high price, and Jesus paid for you with his life. And uh. To sum it all up. We're learning to be children again. We're learning to rely on our King and Savior. And I know it's a very, very, very painful process. Which we we, you're gonna realize. That it's written. For us to understand. And I'm gonna read this again, this is in uh, first Peter, chapter three, and this correlates with what we read in Numbers thirty. Wives, in the same way, submit yourselves to your own husbands, so that in any of them. Who do not believe the word, they may be won over with our words, by the behavior of their wives. When they see the purity and reverence of your lives, your beauty should not come uh, from outward adornment. Such as elaborate hairstyles and wearing of gold jewelry or fine clothes, rather it should be that of a, your inner self. The unfading beauty of a gentle and quiet spirit, which is great worth in God's sight. I can go on and on, and go to Proverbs chapter thirty-one. When women submit to men, it's not saying that they're not partners, they're equal. And we see that displayed at the garden of Gethsemane. Jesus knew, the Lord knew, but his flesh was saying, pass this cup for me. What did he say? Not my will, but sure will be done. So we see that when a man is submitted to Christ. We see the chain of command, woman is supposed to be submissive to her husband. But that doesn't mean the husband just just keeps dictating, he has to take care of her as if he's taking care of himself. And we see it displayed, you know, the fathers, they disciplines, the son. Shows mercy, he takes the chicks under his wings, I mean, he takes us under his wings the way a mother hen. Takes her chicks under her wings. You know, the father. In the book of Job's. You know, I'm with his rod, with the rod, and and Job was. Out of desperation says, who's gonna intercede for me, who's going to take this rod for me? And we see, I I I I've seen it, I see that married. When I did something, oh, your father's gonna be very bad, but then mom would plead, listen, he doesn't know, he had a long dead school. And always intercede for you, you see the parallel? So you see that Jesus will always intercede for us, obviously, when we are redeemed, we are bought. We are in the family, so we have to be thankful for Jesus being our advocate, our mediator. He's the one that puts his hand on God's shoulder, and he's the one that puts his hand on our shoulder, and because of him, he bridges that gap. And we can have a reconciled relationship with the Father. And it's beautiful. So this is not about religion, this is not about how much you know, this is about being a part of the family. And now when we are part of a family, we wanna be a community, we don't just wanna just, just quote scriptures and just beat the gang. Yes, as I mentioned before, this Bible study started, we should fellowship, sit down together, break bread together. And um, maybe one platform, we won't go over the scriptures, we'll just listen to everybody's testimony. We'll see how God encountered them and how he spared them. Spare me from, I I can tell you, then you're like, wow, that's, that is really wild. You mean to tell me that you're doing this and you did that? So it's good to share testimonies, to encourage one another to understand that, listen. We're not righteous, but as is written, Jesus came down to save his people from their sins, his pure grace. Had nothing to do with it, but I can be overjoyed to say to people, wow. There was a gun in the, in my car, bad company. I was drinking and driving, how did I not have a broken bone, I had so many car accidents, had so many people telling me, don't do this, and I'm like, ah, whatever. I don't wanna hear that. It's still drawing me, showing me, through encounter after encounter, after encounter, after encounter. And finally. And when I listen to other people's testimonies, again, I'm talking about the church twenty-eight nineteen. He was drug dealing, robbing people, Queens native. Here's a whole trunk of rifles, they drive off a cliff. Policeman stopped by, car's wrecked. And he asked, is everything all right? They said, yeah, we we good. Okay, y'all be safe, that was God's grace. And little by little, you'll see, God's grace on your life, you'll see that God covered you in his blood. You are marked, and that is a beautiful gift, cuz you know, none of us deserve it, not one, I don't care. What school you attended, what what family you you were raised by, he, you know, no. Uh, my family was always Bible-toting, God-fearing people, that's why I'm so good. No, 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 pure grace, pure grace. Um, so that's it for me. I just wanna encourage everybody, and I want everybody to just. Uh, have a a broader awareness of God in their lives. And just continue to walk with him in this journey home, Brother Scott.
Thank you, Brother London. Well, beloved, that brings tonight's study and review to a close, um. Again, beloved, um. I I don't want you to think that I'm prejudiced. When I say this, but I I thought tonight's study was a rather excellent one, um, London. Covered beautifully. Um, Numbers twenty-eight, twenty-nine. We're covering the vows that. Again, you know, I had some, I had some privy to the vows, but. Again, the way Brother London beautifully expounds the deceit and. That a person makes a vow, if the child makes a rash vow with his mouth. How if the father disannols that vow, then that vow is disannulled. And we can take comfort in that, because. We have made vows, we have made rash vows with our mouths as well. And our Father, the Lord Jesus Christ, had to come in and once again clean up our mess. And beloved, again, these studies, they're blessing my soul. Like I told you, or like I mentioned, please forgive me, like I mentioned. Our sisters. You know, um, not putting this, you know, in a, in a, 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 a sections connection. But women, really, in this lifetime. They get, they get a real raw deal, they really get a raw deal. But as Zalaphad had daughters. As Zalaphad had daughters beautifully. We covered that over the last couple of weeks, as they beautifully, and and just with such. Courage and 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 such strength and determination, they came to Moses and and I'm paraphrasing, hey, Moses, look. Our our dad, Zalaphad, he 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 he, he wasn't, he wasn't down with those who rebelled against Moses. He wasn't a part of that company that that didn't believe God. And he had no sons. I love the way uh, Dr. McGee says, Dr. McGee says that the the girl said. His, his, his sons are daughters, or, you know, um. Like, again, you find levity in the Bible. And the daughters were saying, you know, he he had no sons, and. The um, the constitution says that the land or the inheritance are to be passed down. To the sons, and it's not fair that we don't get our share. Moses said, okay, uh, girls. Let me take your case before the Lord, and beloved, that's what we have to do in every situation. Are we taking our cases before the Lord? Cuz when Moses took the daughters of the Zalaphad's case before the Lord, God himself, now beloved, this is the creator of the universe. Beloved, when what God says goes, period. There's no disputing it, no trying to figure it out, how we can wormhole our way through it. Um, if there's a um, a loophole that we, no, God said, the daughters of Zalaphad speak right. You give their father's inheritance to them. Beloved, it's blessing me, now like I said, I'm a, I'm a man. But it blesses me to have written, to have read what Moses wrote. That Zalaphad's daughters are getting as much of the inheritance or the possession as a man would get. So what does that say for the the the, my women folk, and what I mean by that is my Christian sisters? My wife, my my daughter, my mom, my sister, what does it say for them? That says, in the next life, if I'm gonna get the state of Texas, and I'm just saying, I'm just saying. If I'm gonna get the state of Texas, then my wife, who will then be my sister, she's gonna get, uh. Uh, uh, Mexico, I think Mexico is nearly as big as Texas. If I'm gonna get, as in the universe, a cluster of stars. My wife's gonna get a cluster of stars, my daughter. That blesses me, brothers, that blesses me, because that says to me, my God. The God of my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, the God of Abraham, Isaac and Jacob, he doesn't play favorites. He's gonna bless his, his, his handmaiden with as much property and rights to this universe. As he's gonna bless his manservants, that blesses me, that truly, truly, truly blesses me. So beloved brethren, again, as Brother London has encouraged you, please search these scriptures for yourself. As London sends me the scriptures, I'm going to forward them as well, get into this word. And like I was telling my coworker, we get into the word so that the word can get into us. We've had y'all at the uh, Bible study tonight quite long, please tell your loved ones that. Uh, we're gonna make sure that you get home safely, we'll walk you out to the door. Brother London, please bring tonight's wonderful study to a wonderful, wonderful close.
Heavenly Father. We wanna thank you for your presence. Every time we hear the word, we know you're in your presence. Despite all our sins. Despite all of our shortcomings, thank you for sending your one and only Son. To take the punishment that I deserved, I deserve to be banished from your presence forever. But thankfully, for all of us here, who have participated in this Bible study. Give us the confidence. In your Son's finished work, so we can be at rest. Each and every individual. Who may think. Or may have doubts. Please, Father, encourage them, let them know, you belong to me. Let you, let each and every one here, let them know, it's already done. You're mine. We bless your name, Father. Yes, sure, we bless your name. Hallelujah, thank you for all you've done, you not only went through blood, sweat and tears. You went at my repeat. And thankfully, you rose from the dead. And thankfully, you rose from the dead, so we can live with you forever and ever. Thank you. And amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Good night, beloved ones, from the Mason household and the force of household to y'all's household. Until we meet again at that same bat channel, the same bat station. Good night, love you, and Maranatha.
The journey continues.